All right, the time is now seven thirty-two and I would like to call our monthly meeting to order. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty, yes. Trustee Dupan, yes. Trustee Humphries, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Braver.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Three. Welcome to our visitors. Thank you for your interest in library. Now on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Last Month's Minutes. We'll start by focusing on four A, the August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes, the August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting minutes?
I will move to approval of minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty, yes. Trustee Dupan, yes. Trustee Humphries, yes. Trustee Quintio, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Braver.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to Agenda Item Four B, the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes? Move where you're pleased.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty, yes. Trustee Dupan, yes. Trustee Humphries, yes. Trustee Quintio, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Braver.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, five A and five B, August twenty-twenty-one Financial Report and the September twenty-twenty-one Invoices. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
Sure. We are officially two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year as of the August thirty-first through financial reports that are in your packet. Our revenues are at about sixty-three percent and you will see that going up in September. We did actually receive our full per capita grant, so that seventy-two thousand dollars has been deposited, so you'll see that reflected next month. And because the property tax second installments are due on September first, we will also see those payments begin to come in in September. So we are right on track for revenue. And on the expenditure side, we're at fifty-eight point seven percent expended. If you go down, most of these are right in line, so we are doing really well. You will notice that you have a revised invoice edit list. There was a invoice that was removed from the payments for this month by the village. They needed some additional documentation, so they removed them. At the eleventh hour from our payments for this month. And if you have any questions for me, I think the only thing on the invoices of note, you will see there's a rather large one for haze mechanical. That is for an indoor air quality project that Ian had that we use for us that added some controls and some to the system for him to be able to help us reach the best indoor air quality. This includes being able to flush the building of air overnight every night now. So it was great. And that was all our members.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding financial matters?
I will move to approval of financial matters as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty, yes. Trustee Dupan, yes. Trustee Humphries, yes. Trustee Quintio, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Braver.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Thank you very much. We have no public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comment on other library business? Okay, thank you very much. We do not have any public comment on other library business. I see a new business on here.
And there is actually no new business.
Okay. It was Agenda Item Number Eight.
It is. That is just one of those things that says in your bylaws that new business is always an agenda item.
It looks so unfamiliar without anything under the name.
It's just hanging out.
All right, we're now on to Agenda Item Number Nine, A, Unfinished Business, The Framework for Releasing Anti-Hate Statements. And Rashida is going to help us, I think, work through this, and I believe she is on screen.
Is she with us?
We want to maybe turn the lights on.
Thank you, Jen. So we have Rashida Graham-Lawson, our DEI consultant, here with us electronically today. And then we also have in the audience our staff members Cindy Petrie, our Public Relations Manager, Van Negerich, our Adult and Teen Services Librarian, and then also here with us tonight is Adult and Teen Services Manager Lizzy Metcalf. All right, are we ready? Take it away, Rashida.
Hi. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much for having me. If only be a digital presence tonight. It's good to be back with you all. And I want to make sure that everyone has had an opportunity, mostly just trying to get on the record, that everyone's had an opportunity to look at the guidelines on releasing anti-hate statements.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And so I would like to start, just because I know we're in an open forum, Julie, if you're the most appropriate person to do this, and I think maybe you are, can you provide a little bit of background on how this was developed and what the hope is for tonight?
All right, we actually started doing anti-hate statements back in the spring of twenty-twenty when the George Floyd murder occurred and there were a lot of entities that put out anti-hate statements. We really started, and this was an effort that was really spearheaded by Cindy Petrie and Van Negerich to start making these statements and to, they really wrote them. So this is the framework that they used and that they put together for us on the, and as they put it, the five Ws and the H on anti-hate statements. So in each case, they asked, why do we release statements? What situations do we write an anti-hate statement for? When do we release a statement? Who is the audience and how do we write one? And then where is it posted and shared? So these are the questions that they have tried to answer to put together a framework for answering each of those questions whenever we do an anti-hate statement. So we have done four altogether. They are all on our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion webpage for the library. And actually, is there anything you would like to add, Cindy or Van?
Sure. One of the big motivators for, at least myself, and I think I can speak for you then, is that when we're writing these statements, there are really messages to those affected community members that are in the hit MPG group that is in crisis in that moment to tell them that we are with them, that we care about them, and that their issues are seen and that they are visible. And so these aren't really necessarily statements out to just like, they're not just a statement to like put up because everybody else is putting one up. It's really to communicate to those individuals in crisis that we see them, we recognize what is happening, and that we care about them, and we want them to feel safe, and that we will be advocates for them here in this building. Do you want to add something?
Yeah, to add on to what Cindy said, it specifically addresses those affected the different groups that Cindy said, to specifically show support to them and reinforce that they are welcome here, that, you know, they are safe to come to the library, especially during these times of crisis, instead of just having a blanket statement of, you know, everyone's welcome here, we serve everyone. During these times of crises, we feel that, you know, it's especially important to make sure we're addressing these specific groups, making sure that, as Cindy said, they will see and feel supported.
Trustee Humphries would like to make a comment.
Just a quick comment to add to that. I was happy to see and hear that you actually define them, because it may be members of our community, our customers, if you will, our citizens. It may be members of our staff. And I think it's not only welcoming, but it's invitational. And I appreciate that.
And Rashida, I'll just add, at least from my perspective, what I think I'm sort of interested in learning more tonight is, and just to give you, just to back up and to give you a little bit more context, I think I've been on the board now for five years. So over the first maybe three to four years, we never issued these statements, and I don't think similar statements had been issued previously. And we, as a board, over the past year and a half or so, have collectively agreed on, I think, the four statements that have been issued. And, but it's still, I think, from my perspective, it's somewhat just uncomfortable, but not from the perspective of, you know, I mean agreement with the message, but what creates, I think, the discomfort is I'm doing this on behalf of the library. I don't feel like I necessarily have the proper training to determine kind of when is appropriate. First of all, should we be doing this as a library? I mean, we did agree on the four statements, but just getting your thoughts on kind of that aspect of it, and then also just, you know, trying to get a better understanding of when we should, you know, issue the statements. I think Cindy and Van have done a great job putting the framework together. I still struggle with it, and I don't, I don't know how it gets more definitive, because it really can't. I mean, these are gray, it's a gray area, but the decision of when to issue a statement is, you could make an argument that almost every day, a statement could be issued, from my perspective. And it's like just getting better clarity on kind of what is it, what is the, how do we process that? And to a certain extent, I really do rely on the library staff, and, you know, they're keeping up with, you know, what's happening in the community, I think, much more than I'm able to do on a day-to-day basis. And so I really rely on their expertise. But I also just want to just, I think, become better at being a participant in this and being able to, you know, feel more comfortable in this role.
I appreciate what you've shared. I obviously appreciate the work that Cindy and Van have done here. Before I go into my whole diatribe, I want to make sure that I have everyone's thoughts and concerns on the table. So let me hear from a few more people who want to share, and then I can provide a little bit of insight, and then we can have some discourse about this. Others who have thoughts, who would like to share?
Trustee Quintio?
I think just, I know I've said this before, when we talked about why we didn't release statements before and now we are releasing statements, I think it's a matter of when you know better, you do better. And I think that that is where we are now. As a library, you're going through this process. We've committed to this process. Our staff is committed to this, to learning more. And so, if not us, then who? Like, I feel like I'm making a lot of quotes, but that's kind of what I feel. Like, we have taken on this leadership role in our community, and we make these statements, and then maybe someone else will say, you know what, it's okay for us to say what we're saying. Or, you know, we see what's happening at the school board level, and maybe they're not, they can't, they are not allowed to make those statements because they're in the school board. I don't know, I just feel like we have such a unique opportunity to speak for the MPG people in our community who need to be seen, as Cindy and Van said. And I'm so grateful that we have these people on staff who know how to do this and do it so well. And I'm incredibly excited to see this layout, because one of the things that I didn't like that we were doing before was adding all these links to reviews articles, because I'm like, we don't need to, we don't have to justify our support. We are supporting a community that needs our support. We don't need to justify it. And then people, Cindy would think it's reasonable, but we know that we're on the one side of what needs to be said, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Trustee Humphries?
Yeah, I think this is a logical part of our DEI study that we commissioned or anybody we hired. And we decided as a group that we wanted to do this. And very early on, before we even voted this, I remember thinking to myself, and I'm a person, I think most people would know me, would know that that's been a good part of my life, supporting things of this nature. And yet, I'd been on the library board for twenty-some years. I never thought about it. And that I found very embarrassing all of a sudden, because I think the why that they have pointed out is very clear. And when I started thinking about the why, being welcoming, being invitational, being a safe place for our customers, our staff, and so forth, I mean, the why became pretty obvious to me, particularly in the environment in the last few years, which seemed to enable much more public discussions of various groups. And certainly, certain incidents like the torch story, the most obvious one, probably, it's not the only by long time. And when that was pointed out to me, the why became, I think, fairly clear to me. Then it became a question of when. And I think summarized in the policy is, you know, what situations do we do? I'm not going to read it, but I think it's in the policy, how do we determine, or at least the framework that we use to determine when it's appropriate to do it. And so I am very much in favor of this. I don't want to do one every week necessarily. I think the framework that will perhaps become a policy helps us determine the when and so forth. But I'm very happy that this has come out of our DEI study.
Trustee Doherty?
I echo what Vernell said about, I don't question the library should and needs to be doing this work, but it's important, and I think, as you said, you know. I'm going to have to quote you, quoting someone. So do better to feedback, is that what it was? Okay. So that part, I have no problem with whatsoever. The part that I have, that I struggle with is the when part of it. And in a different way than you, in a way, because the concern I have is actually about the, if a community group is in crisis, and how would we know? Now, unfortunately, the incidents that have happened in responding to have been pretty obvious in the day-to-day, right? So it's like, there's not a lot to question. They were egregious, they were, you know, talked about in the media, they were important and impactful. Hopefully, it won't happen, but we are likely to face another incident that maybe isn't, doesn't elevate to that level or, because society gets kind of immune to some of these actions, and it just becomes a buzz that we feel. So for us, as, you know, responding to these, of course, we want to support the hit MPG's that are impacted by these, by whatever happens. And I really appreciate that the who is our audience and answer, if questioned and answered in this meeting. It's really important to clarify a lot of things for me, as someone who's just reading this and trying to understand what we're coming from, what we think that might mean. My one concern, the concern I have about the when is kind of about, when, like, is there ever a time when releasing a statement might cause more harm to the community in crisis than it would? I don't know how we would know. I guess that's my question. And obviously, you all, as students, have made more involved in hearing more about issues than I have, just because we work directly with community members, understand these issues, because it's part of the role. But I don't know how much, like, you know, we know, or you all know about the communities that are impacted. How do we truly know, like, what the tipping point is, or that there's some point where it's, you know, that a community is divided, there's, you know, there's an opportunity there to have conflict in the community. So that's why, it's not to say that I don't agree with the points in the framework, because I absolutely do. Which is that question I have in the back of my mind is like, well, if it ever is kind of, you know, on the edge of it, is it do we make statements, or do we not? How can we make sure that we're hearing from the actual audience, actual community in crisis to really afford that? And so I guess that's just kind of, you know, I think we all need to better understand, right? A lot of, you know, a lot of this work is just really listening to, to commit them to do so, that we may not have heard before, that we did not have the opportunity to hear. I just want to make sure that we're hearing that and taking that with a really good inspiration to do, to release these statements.
Very sad. I'd like to follow that, because I think it's a little reflective of what I would say, too. I think it's very unfortunate how divided our country is right now. And when we have put out statements, and I've noticed even much more divide within Denver's world, which, I'm not saying that's a horrible thing to learn or experience, see that, but the statements are prompting people to be this or that, or, so when you say the who, the audience, I also think it's besides the hit MPG, it's also people who could be educated, which we talked about with our other statements. And that doesn't say that part in who else the audience is besides the hit MPG, because it's also educational purpose for others. But, so I was always very careful about the tone, because we just know it's a fine line. I'm not someone who does not support these groups, or ever has heat against these groups. But if you word one thing wrong, then you turn off another group. And that's what I saw. We were getting, here's all the people, well, I get here's all the people who don't like it, every time. And that's what I don't want a statement to do. But I do think that they did that more eye-opening than I would ever have known. And we know that, because some of the wording in here is, you know, like, tonight, not whitewash it to be genuine and authentic, right? So to your point of, if we do something that actually was trying to be helpful and it causes harm to the hit MPG, right, because of wording it wrong. So that's where I think it's such a fine line. You could have people who are fully in support of something, but they didn't like some wording of it, right? We all talked already before about the Asian community and naming out different, or the Indian community, and naming out the different tribes, the Native Indians. And some people say we should, and some people say we shouldn't. So one of those is an example.
So I think, I feel like I, everyone's echoed things that I've felt in terms of just being a person that totally agrees and is on board, and then also taking my roles as trustee and saying, okay, now I represent the library, how do I, how do I feel like I'm making the right decision on behalf of this, you know, community center, basically. And I think a lot of it, you know, I thought a lot, and I saw a lot of the negative responses we got, I thought about that. And, you know, it is uncomfortable to get those responses. And it kind of made me think for a second, like, maybe we're making the wrong choice because we're just angering people. But at the end of the day, I feel like any sort of progress has always been met with resistance. And the progress doesn't occur unless, you know, people are speaking up, and then people are then speaking louder, and, you know, you're having that dialogue versus kind of everyone just dusting everything out of the room, and people feeling marginalized, and people feeling like there's not a problem because no one's saying anything. So it's just kind of this dynamic that I feel has always been felt for myself personally in Denver's world, that, you know, status quo just is, it's kind of, it needs to change at this point. So I think in terms of kind of deciding what situations were, I just think there's no way to get this perfect answer to that. I think it's a matter of, what are we seeing? What are we feeling? What are we hearing about in the news? You know, unfortunately, yeah, there is, you know, a situation that would probably warn one every five minutes, but it just comes down to, you know, when we see one that speaks to our community or speaks to a very specific group. And I think it's really just going to be a matter of trial and error, at least starting with some sort of framework.
I just have two quick follow-up comments. One, and this is not a comment of, well, let's go look for issues and find issues, but I'm assuming there's a lot of things that are happening kind of beneath the surface, you know, to hit MPG's that are not in the news. And I almost think, to a certain extent, that, and again, it's coming to the board with this, you know, information, and like, should we put a statement out about people who not only are being marginalized, but are not getting any recognition for what's happening? And so, being truly kind of on the front lines and bringing these issues to the forefront. And again, I'm not saying, oh, let's go find issues, but they're out there. And so I think that, that's one thing that I think would be interesting from my perspective.
Masks are required for everyone, regardless of vaccination status. If you do not wear a mask, you will be asked to leave.
So the other point is, this is more of a question to Cindy and to Van, is kind of in response to Kim's comment about, I also view this as being an opportunity to educate, but, I mean, I'm just sort of curious, like, what your thoughts are on that aspect. And like, really, is this really the, you know, is this really meant to be an educational tool, or is it really meant to be for the hit MPG's and to, you know, kind of, you know, I'm just curious as to what your thoughts are on that point.
Sure. I mean, I think that to say, you know, this is something that I feel like in marketing we struggle with all the time, right, is, you know, you're putting something out there and you have a primary audience, but everyone's going to read it. So it's kind of the argument of like, isn't everyone your audience? And like, to an extent, yes. However, I think that we can take these as learning tools to model the behavior we would like to see in the community, and to really pave the way of taking a stance for our hit MPG's and showing support that way. And when we're writing them, I think it's more, it's really important to speak directly to the hit MPG's and make this about them, right? It's not about me wanting to, you know, make this about how I am feeling just because I'm uncomfortable. It's about how can I support those individuals that are in crisis. And so it might make people feel a little uncomfortable, because, you know, some of these things, a lot of people haven't thought about. You know, a lot of people are in complete denial that this is happening in the world or even in our community. And that's one of the big reasons why I think it's so important to to speak and make this about the hit MPGs and that they are our audience for these, because they are so often overlooked, right? Like, they are a marginalized group. And we need to show support to them in that moment. And we can use our statement as kind of that, that model of behavior that we hope to see other community members doing. That's my, my take on it.
So adding on to that, in the framework under community audience, we do say that the primary audience is the hit MPG that's affected, but we also talk about how other community members can read the statement and use it to reflect or think about the issues that caused the statement to be issued in the first place, and, you know, systemic racism or depression that's related to it, and what they can do to help create change or to help the situation, or just to even think about the situation that's happening. And so the statement is relevant for all community members. And as Kim and Sutmane talked about, and Cindy as well, is an opportunity to learn, to think. And even for community members who may have a negative reaction at first, it is causing people to think about things, even if at first they may be having negative thoughts at first. But it does bring their attention to what's happening.
Any additional comments or at the moment? Yeah, just one, I guess. I almost think of this as partly a personal policy. It's how we treat staff. It's also how we expect staff to treat our customers. And so part of it is that. And then the other thing it refers to in here is, and this is, could get a little sticky, but I think it's, as I'll say, this is a living document, to model behavior that we would like to see in the community, to act as a catalyst for positive change. That one is a little bit different than a personal policy. That is something that we would like the library to model. And I think that's okay too. That one requires a little more supervision or that's a little more analysis at the time. And I think our staff can help us do that. But I see this framework, I mean, I, you know, we can tweak this. I'm not saying we can't. But when we finish tonight, something we approve it. It's a living document. The next time something comes up, we'll, staff will use it, and then they'll come to us, we'll use it. If we need to change it or add to it or something, you will. And I think we're appointed from the community to represent and reflect and lead the community. And I feel comfortable doing that with, with a framework to start.
Hey, Rashida, did you get all that?
Got it, got it.
All right. So you're here to help us with all of that.
That is happening right now.
She must have a slower.
Hi Ma.
Hello.
Okay, you are? You're cutting in and out.
Can you hear me up?
We can hear you, but you cut in and out. Both video and audio.
Is it better?
Yes.
Just now.
I was really loud.
I think we're going to turn it up a little bit, and I think, but you're coming through clear, more clearly.
Okay.
All right, you can, I just maybe keep talking long and adjust your volume here.
Okay, perfect. So there are a couple key and pressing points. But where I would also want us to start is how is nominating white coastal way of being or white supremacy informing our DEI processes? In what ways are we allowing structures that have been inherently paternalistic, colonialistic, empirical, patriarchal to inform the process? And it doesn't have to always be bad that that's happening, but we do always have to be taking stock of how those things are informing our processes. And it is always that of white supremacy informing our processes. So we want to look for how we, how we are tied to perfectionism, how we cross our Ts and dot our Rs, our Is, how that might inform the process. We also want to look for how objectivity informs the process. Are we creating a policy that will always work in every single case? That's also one of the characteristics that we went over when we were together the last time. And so I hear you all shifting away from that by naming liminal space, by letting what, the statements you make over the next three years should inform the statements you make for the three years after that. Letting what you make a statement about inform the future culture and context in which you make future statements. I think it will be always important, when you're making these frameworks and guidelines and policies, I am huge for, like, the contextualization of the holder in which the thing was made, you be a part of the thing. So for example, I wrote down that you should name this process at the top of the page in italics, in italics, it is after eight o'clock for sure. And italics. So that anyone who ever encountered this framework or guideline would know the context in which it was created, because context will always inform the side and the reason for. I think because I'm sure this time that we're sharing tonight is being recorded, that a link to this recording as a part of this framework would give anybody who needed more of an understanding the opportunity to acquire that understanding as a part of the document in a way that really illustrates that the document is a living document to this point, and that it exists in this sort of liminal space where we understand from the second we wrote it, that it was going to be altered by history and time and occurrences, right? It takes us out of this space where we have to cross every T and dot every I about it, when the reality is that there is no way to cross every T and dot every I. Arguably, some of the Ts and Is have not even occurred yet that will inform this process or this framework. I think in those italics, you need to say something about the, the reality that this guideline or framework was created with a learned orientation and a posture of humility, recognizing that it probably has shortcomings that will be filled in over the course of its living and existence. I think it will be important to just, again, all we're doing here is touching the elephant. Concerns about having the right language, and no matter what language we use, there's going to be language that doesn't work. Remember when we did developing a common and shared language? So saying something, just naming that there may be wording in here that might need to be changed over time, but naming the heart of why it was created at all is a part of the couple of few, maybe there's a couple of italics paragraphs, that just really take all of this into account before you get into the framework, with a link to a conversation like the one we're having, a link to the conversation we're having tonight. So that anybody who wanted to understand or have, or had questions about the framework could get the intel that helps them to better understand the nuance and the context in which the document was created. That we're moving from a linear, rational, top-down way of being that is typically rooted in whiteness and white supremacy to a more organic, bottom-up way of being, recognizing that we don't know all the things we need to know as we take that journey. The question of whether or not it was an educational tool or it was a support mechanism for hit MPGs, I think the answer is yes. And maybe that's something that would also be addressed in the paragraphs that precede the actual, precede the actual framework. I think when we try to make things rational and linear, we also remove the motion from the thing. But the reality is that this is the anti-hate statement framework. Hate is a feeling and a sentiment. So the statement is probably always going to be driven by sentiment, because it's an anti-sentiment statement. So that the sentiment is to respond to the anti-sentiment. And that takes us into a space that we're not typically having to be a part of or even accustomed to be a, being a part of, as we think about boards, decision-taking, voting, policy, and professionalism. I think naming that as a part of the context will be important, because it really is going to be a liminal and nuanced space out of which to make decisions of.
Hi, Kriti. For no reason whatsoever, the laptop we were using just restarted itself. So, and it is still in the process of restarting itself. So and it really appears to be a different laptop. So we are just taking a pause in this conversation. Yeah, it's just, it was a little five minute break. And in the meantime, we may, we may pause this conversation and perhaps go on to the next item in the agenda and then come back with, when Azu is ready. Would you like, would you like to stay on? I can just put you on speaker right now.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So Rashida will be on phone with us. And if you would like, we could just pause that conversation.
Should we make a motion to go to 9B and then, I'll give you that a little formality.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't require that you go, you can just go ahead and, and take a pause and move on to the next.
We will take a pause on Agenda Item 9A and move to Agenda Item 9B, which is the COVID-19 Response and Phase Reopening Plan. Julie, do you want us to know how we're doing?
Well, things are, obviously, we're back in masks, but we are, and right after our last board meeting is when the state of Illinois went back to a mask mandate, I believe, the day after the board meeting that the governor made that announcement. So we are back to masks in the library for everyone. We are not doing the zero tolerance that we had been doing, where we've been giving people a little more grace to primarily if somebody walks in, goes to the whole shelf, grabs their stuff, uses the self-check and leave, where staff is not confronting them and prolonging a conversation, starting a conversation that probably wouldn't have happened, or prolonging a visit that probably wouldn't have been shorter, had the person not been confronted by staff. So we are, the person in charge is walking around, our library monitors are walking around with masks to be able to offer to people. But by and large, we've found we have far, have had far fewer problems this time around than we did last year when we reopened and we could not get people to wear masks. People seem to be better about it these days. I think maybe it's because they're used to it. But on the positive side, we are, we've reopened programming, in-person programming. As you can see, from the grid floor of the room we are sitting in, our socially-distanced children's programs are happening in this room, and they actually number the spaces. And as families come in for those programs, they're assigned to a space. And it's working beautifully. We've had some really great turnout for some in-person programs. So that's been wonderful. And, oh, and meeting rooms, public meeting room bookings reopened, the quiet study room reopened. So we are really, we've restarted our notary service. So we're really back to full horse now. So things are moving right along. And you'll see from our statistics that we are, we are still down from 2019, but not that far down from 2019's statistics. So it's good to see people returning to the library.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to, unless we have any questions for Julie, do we have a motion to approve the COVID-19 Response and Phase Reopening Plan as presented?
So, second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the COVID-19 Response and Phase Reopening Plan as presented, that has been seconded. Keatlin, can you proceed for oral call please?
Trustee Dory? Yes. Trustee Gabbard? Yes. Trustee Humphrey?
Yes.
Trustee Luthier? Yes. Trustee Stapleton? And President Gray?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the COVID-19 Response and Phase Reopening Plan as presented. Hopefully.
All right, that is working. Getting the all cameras set to the new, to our new computer that is over here. And it looks like we're almost there. And that was the one other action item that was on this. All right, Rashida, I'm going to hang up because you should be back in. Looks like we're back.
All right, everyone. I'll stick back. All right. So I was talking about liminal space and things being organic and sort of contextually naming all of that in italics as a foreground for the framework itself, so that there, it takes all of the guesswork out of that and hopefully minimizes the questions that have to be fielded, if people can read that context for themselves and even click on a link for this conversation. But that said, I think I was about to go into how to answer some of the questions around uniformity for the sake of fairness and consistency. And I wondered about whether or not landing knowledge and process was something that would happen once a year or not. or not the land acknowledgement process was something that would happen once a year or not, which led me to wonder about whether or not that could be an annual or semi-annual anti-hate statement that is issued from the library that addresses those unseen incidents that we know are still occurring every day. And so that way, even when we're not knowing all of the things and seeing all of the things, we're not acknowledging them, right? And then in terms of like, what are the things that we should be acknowledging and how do we figure that out? I think anything that is national to the extent of Sandra Land, Trayvon Martin, George Floyd, I'm sad that I can just do that off the top of my head on and on, but that is telling, right? We know what those instances are, we know them categorically across our community and acts should be a driver for whether or not we write a statement. Are there national instances that are categorically known across our community when that happens when writing a statement? And then we have the Anti-Racism Advisory Team that helps us to make these decisions. So I would say two-fold. One, if that team is pushing up and into the board for a statement, or if that team is mobilizing Cindy and Van to push up and into leadership and the board for a statement, that's something we want to pay attention to because as someone mentioned earlier, that is the hit MPG representation, naming that it needs something. The challenge there in some ways is that the Anti-Racism Advisory Team can only be comprised of diversity to the extent to which it is present in the community, and so that in some ways might make that team a little bit less of us than we wanted to be at times. So what there could also be is a process of request to the Anti-Racism Advisory Team from the community for a certified anti-hate statement, so that there is a conversation or dialogue, there's a reciprocity and mutuality of communication between the Anti-Racism Advisory Team and the community on what those issues should be. So much like patrons can come in and request certain resources, the community, hit MPGs, could make a request for an anti-hate statement to come from the Anti-Racism Advisory Team, and that might be a way for us to put a system in place to be hearing that from hit MPGs because I heard that as a concern that the board had. What should precede this entire context or maybe come directly after the italics of context is what I heard resoundingly, which is that we're not questioning whether or not we should have an anti-hate statement policy guideline, and we're not questioning whether or not we should make anti-hate statements, and we're not even trying to justify the reason for that. What we're doing is providing some nuance for the context in which these decisions were made, but we're not doing that as a means to justify making the statements or having the guidelines for making statements. And I think that that is also important to name somewhere before we get into the meat and tables of the guidelines themselves. Yeah, those were all of mine, and I'll start talking now to hear a little bit from you on the back chair.
I do think providing the context of the discussions that were involved in coming up with this, I think is really important. I like that idea of just preceding everything with kind of our process and some sort of documentation of that, I think is great.
Trustee Humphries.
Yeah, I really like that bringing the advisory committee into this, this is a great concept, that's why they're there, or why they should be there. I think that is a role that they can help with, other comments. In my mind, it doesn't necessarily always have to be a national or global or widespread issue. It might be very local. It might be a unique, down-the-stroke thing, you know, left-handed, I better not, but something unique and down-the-stroke and it would be equally valid. And then the other piece of it that I think is involved is conversational. If we're not sure whether we should do it or how we should do it, we'll do what we did with the land acknowledgement. We'll ask them. We went to the Midwest Sowing Organization and said, "Help us with this. Is it something we ought to do and how do you think we ought to do it?" And it's competition. So I definitely think that it is, that it can be and should be an educational tool in addition to being a personal policy.
I love your point of conversation. When Cindy and Van said things, I hear it a different way than when I read it black and white on a piece of paper. And I said that before about the land acknowledgement. If you could just have a recording of your voice because it sounded so soothing and calming, I guess, Rashida, I'm always like reading it, wondering where's the devil's advocate going to read this statement from too. So I'm like, I'm alarmed when I do that because thinking about how others are going to react to it. So part of the conversation and sharing her point of all the background information of where this came from and the thought that went into this, the W's and the H, and I think that that helps to the framework in terms of, to soften it. I guess that's always my undertone is trying to say how to make it be more well-received.
I guess for me is when we're supporting one community or ensuring that a community feels supported, I'm not always necessarily concerned with what the other, I'm not that I'm not concerned what other people think, but I really, the people that I'm thinking about are the people that are being affected by whatever's happening. And so not that I don't care what other people think, but I think you mentioned like devil's advocate, and I'm looking for that quote, like the devil doesn't need an attorney. Like, I don't really care what, if somebody is going to be so fragile to not hear that we are saying something that, I mean, nothing that we have said as a library has been to say, "You are not welcome." It is to remind people who don't feel welcome that they are as well. And so I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're not being so soft that we're not saying anything. Like, there's just, people put statements out sometimes, and you read it and you're like, I didn't even know what that meant because it just was like to make themselves feel good, and I don't, I just want to make sure that we're not doing that because to me, that is just like a sticker on your hand or a pad on your back, and it's, we did something, we didn't do anything. So I don't know if we don't do anything, then just pretend.
Well, I think to echo that from a different perspective, I mean, I'm grateful that I've not been the audience for any of these statements, right? And I have that privilege, and I have to, I mean, if they're not bothering, they're bothering so far the Department of the Board that helps craft them, supports the staff that craft them, and wants to lean into this, supporting the community during crises, but it's not about me at all. I mean, it is about supporting the audience that happens to not be me in these cases, and I really want to, I think, just be aware of that and helping take the perspective, try to take the perspective on what our audience we are reaching out to, which has been named in all these cases. That's just something I feel is really important, and to your point, I'm not thinking about how someone like me is, I'm thinking about how these groups of people in crisis are actually receiving this and hopefully taking it to heart and understanding that the library is truly supporting things that they feel like.
And it's everything, I just, I don't know if we're able to say it, but I think that's all time to say, that we want the library to feel that everyone is, so.
This is Rashida, that's a really important point on the table that I don't want to submit, that I think should go somewhere, somewhere aggressive, definitive decision that this is happening and we don't need to justify it, is also the naming, that the privilege is not in being named in an anti-hate statement. The privilege is in not ever having to be named in an anti-hate statement. I feel like it's just an extremely profound comment that definitely needs to be tied to our not having a need to justify it, and that goes back to the objective of it being an educational tool and in support of hit MPGs, that the privilege is not in being named in an anti-hate statement, but that the privilege is in not ever having to be named in an anti-hate statement. I think that's a huge gift in terms of it being an educational tool.
Yeah, I don't know what I have to add to everything we, because I think, I think my, I have, Rashida, I think you've helped us a lot in just continuing, you know, providing a different perspective on the anti-hate statements and framework generally, and I think from my perspective, and I'll go back to what Trustee Humphries said earlier, is that we're doing the best we can, you know, at this moment in time, and just based on conversations we've had over the past few months and conversations tonight, I would be supportive of adopting the framework. I don't know if any other trustees have thoughts or a comment on that.
Well, I can just say that Van and Cindy and Dan and I can work on putting together that, that preface?
The italicize.
The italicized beginning of the link to this discussion. We can also include a link to our preliminary discussion that this board had in June as well, because I think that really does help contextualize how do we get to this place? And so, yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Especially people who feel like, where did this come from?
Yeah.
Some people say, like, how come all of a sudden the library is, that we have some, you know?
My answer to that one is, I admit quite quickly, I didn't know that I didn't know it. And once we started having these conversations, I started to figure out that I didn't know it, and I started to ask questions, and I think that's okay.
There was one characteristic of white supremacy, and I can't think of the name of it right now, please forgive me, but it was, oh, I know what it was, it was paternalism. Fraternalism is when the people at the top get to make the decisions, and they also get to decide how much of that the people who are not at the top get to know. What those italics do, what those italics do. Oh, wow, friends, I really do have two degrees in the English language. What those italics do is it counters that paternalistic way of doing business because it's making the information transparent, it is making the decision-making flat by including the Anti-Racism Advisory Board, you're flattening the hierarchical power dynamics associated with anti-hate statements. You're counterbalancing white supremacy and how this is done. And what I want to name is that there is room for us to be curious about what other frameworks and policies will create in the future and what italics, contextualized italics need to come with those policies and frameworks in the spirit of debunking paternalism and being more transparent and flat in the decision-making protocol. So this doesn't have to just be for the DEI work that we're doing, because if we're taking that equity lens to everything we're doing, then we want to be thinking about how to be more transparent and mutual reciprocal and vulnerable and clear, transparent in those spaces as well, and not just when it's pertaining to a DEI-directed policy.
Great, do we have any additional questions or comments regarding the framework for releasing anti-hate statements? Great. Do we have a motion to approve the framework for releasing anti-hate statements?
Is it going to be augmented a little bit, or?
Well, you guys just approve the framework, we'll put together the...
Yeah, okay. The way, and just from my perspective, the way I was interpreting that is this is the, this is not legal, but this is the legal, you know, that's the way I do it, and then the preface, and both of which can be modified in the future, but especially the preface can be kind of...
Or at least to date whenever something happens that should be included.
Exactly, sorry, a little second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the framework for releasing anti-hate statements that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Gudan, yes. Trustee Humphries, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Pinto, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Gray.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the framework for releasing anti-hate statements. Thank you, Cindy and Van, and also thank you very much Rashida for your help in getting us through this.
Well, I just bring you all for the work you're doing.
All right, and you're welcome to stay in the rest of our meeting, but you shouldn't feel any obligation.
I mean, I have been, yeah, listen, because y'all time limit is 25 minutes on my treadmill, but I think I better go do that.
It's quite a minute, I'm re- clocking.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Rashida. Okay, we're now on to Agenda Item Number 10, the Library Directors' Report. Julie.
All right. Let's see. First of all, congratulations, Dave, on your award.
Thank you.
The pictures were fantastic, so I hope you really enjoyed that, and I'm so glad that your, the friends and community really came together to honor you in that way.
Thank you very much. It was an amazing thing. I told some of my friends, including, I'll say it for you, that it's a good thing I was wearing a mask because there were four speeches plus some other comments, and I was tearing up on all of them. I can say five, but I'm a guy, I'm not trying to say that. No, I was a little bit, and I thanked the community for it, and I pointed out in my conclusion in my thank you, we thank you statement that it's not just about me, it's about all of the organizations that led to that day, and everybody there had a role, and everybody there should have a piece of the award. Those of you that were there for me, but I paraphrased my own pipe, I'm not saying that, I'm not fun yet. And I said, we're not, and that goes for everybody in this room. So thank you.
Great way to honor all the good work you've done. Let's see. Oh, our pickup lockers should be going live right about the first of October, so keep your fingers crossed. They are in the process of getting their sign-in wrapped on them now, so we are looking forward to getting that started. Once they are wrapped, we will be doing, and we'll be filming a video of the how-to, so we are looking forward to having that so that folks know exactly what to expect when they walk up to a pickup locker. So we are looking forward to having that so that, uh, folks know exactly what to expect when they walk up to a pickup locker. Um, and we can talk briefly, uh, before about the public safety staffing changes that we are planning to make. We did, um, speak to the management team on Wednesday of last week. And we have made some decisions and we are moving forward with the planning process on that. So, um, it is our goal to have that new, um, model in place by the first of the year. Um, and then, oh, the equity advisory team, we have a whole bunch of new members on the equity advisory team. Um, so we are making good progress on the equity strategic plan. However, it's turning out that scheduling for equity advisory team meetings is our biggest hurdle at the moment. So, um, yeah, we're, we're doing our best. Um, we, we may, we may not be able to retain all of our newest volunteers just because people's schedules are not lining up. So, let's see, oh, and then on Monday, the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation voted to support our social work interns program with a stipend, $15 an hour for two, uh, two stipends, so two, uh, social workers for starting in January of 2022. So we are looking forward to getting that, um, moving with them. They did, uh, they passed the funding for the first year and then they will be fundraising for a second year of those stipends. They also, um, passed that at the level of $15 an hour, also in, um, believing in the equity of the $15 an hour wage. So I think that is a wonderful way for them to support us in our EDI work and in, um, the social, um, getting social services to our library patrons. Um, one of the reasons that we did kind of a shorter term for that is we are actually looking at a lot of changes in potential changes in social services needs here in the library and the way that this community is working through those. Because the Village of Downers Grove has hired a full-time social worker. Um, and in addition, who, um, will be looking at putting together a social services referral program and also doing a, um, an analysis of where the gaps in social services are in our community and how to bridge those gaps.
And happy eighteen, please.
So.
The library will be closing in fifteen minutes.
Fantastic work that will be right in.
Please bring the attention to check out to the self-checks or the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes, thank you.
And then the other huge factor for us is DuPage Pats and the changes that they are undergoing right now. Um, we just met yesterday with, uh, the DuPage Pats staff. Um, they are in process of purchasing the former Red Roof Inn building on Waterfield Road here in Downers Grove to create an interim housing center, um, right here in our community. Um, we anticipate that this will be game-changing, um, in the way that, uh, shelter is being provided and in the way that those, our, um, individuals experiencing homelessness in our community are accessing social services. So really, we're kind of at this crossroads, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to get ourselves over the hump and see what happens. So we, we thank the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation for their incredible support um, in helping us keep those and attract and retain the best social work interns possible. And then just a reminder that the land acknowledgement event is on Saturday, October 2nd at 10:00 AM. And, uh, those of you who are attending, if you want to get with Cindy for a moment and, uh, after the meeting ends, uh, to talk about who's doing what at that meeting. Um, I am also pleased to report that, uh, Assistant Director Jen Rieske is going to be able to attend that and, and, uh, show the flag since I cannot be at that, uh, that event.
No, you cannot.
I'm the one who can.
But the other three are.
Unfortunately, Jonathan and I are both otherwise occupied on that day, so.
You are, yeah.
So please, uh, those of you who are attending, get with Cindy and she'll give everyone their assignments. Um, and I think that is all of that.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item 11, and I just wanted to follow up on something Julie you had mentioned in congratulating Dave. I also congratulate you on the award and, um, you know, we've been together on the board for five years now, I think approximately. And I think one thing that I really appreciate about the time we spent together is that I think, you know, getting together once a month and, you know, adopting frameworks and policies and budgets. I think it's very easy sometimes to get sort of disconnected to kind of what's going on with the library on a day-to-day basis. And I know that from my perspective, you never let us forget like what, how, what we do impact people. And, um, I just, I really appreciate that and I wanted to make that point here, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any additional trustee comments or requests for information? Trustee?
Just reacting, or I'm not reacting. It's like our, we're saying, the, uh, I read something in the, in the packet that we got that there was a possibility that the village social worker might spend some time. So, do you have any data in one of the?
Oh, actually, she came and met, she met with Lizzie, who, um, Adult and Teen Services Manager Lizzie Manekowski, who is here with us tonight, uh, who is the direct supervisor of our social work interns. So she came to meet with Lizzie and start that connection process and also with Cindy.
So there, there will be some direct connection in the village. Full-time social worker, they spend a lot of time here working with our people, coaching them, something like that, I don't. We didn't, I'm sure that's a moving target at this point, but.
Yeah, when I met with the village social worker, she really wasn't sure to what extent she'd be able to be doing any kind of intakes or office hours here. But I did ask her if that was a possibility. So, you know, I think she, right now, she's just getting kind of like lay of the land and trying to figure out what the village's expectations are and what the needs of different service organizations in the community are, so.
And it's been very positive that she's already met with two of our manager team members about how we can make those connections.
Yeah, and she had made her, so.
Exactly, exactly.
I think, I think I was the first person she met with, like, yes, community for one of the first few, and I'm connecting with our interns. Maybe not personally, like in person, but she was, she was offered to reach out to them and talk.
I'm just very pleased that it's starting to see that that added to our list of core services in the building, which I think it should be, 10 years ago. And I was seeing it come back. Interns in our kitchen staff, person in their kitchen, I think that is a recognition of the validity of that function in government and our. Uh, thanks very much for the foundation, the funding, that's huge. Thank you, that's all.
Additional trustee comments or requests for information? Okay, then we're on to agenda item number 12, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you everyone.